Welcome, everyone, to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, February the first, 2022. Madam Clerk, if we can please do a roll call.
Mayor Higgin, Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Carlson.
Present.
Counselor Middleton Hope.
Present.
Counselor Palladino.
Present.
Counselor Parker.
Here.
Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
Here.
Acting Mayor Dodick.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Croson.
Here, gung hoey fat choy.
And Mayor Higgin.
Present.
Present, thank you.
Thank you. Start with the recognition, uh, oh, boy. This is the acknowledgement statement. Sorry. Want to say it's Monday, but I guess it's Tuesday. The City of Lethbridge acknowledges that we're gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people, past, present, and future, while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The City of Lethbridge is also home to the Métis Nation of Alberta, Region III. We'll start with bouquets, and I'll start to my far left. Acting Mayor Dodick.
I have nothing today. Thank you.
Counselor Campbell.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, Dr. Gordon Hunter put together a book of hockey stories from local people called "The Older I Get, the Better I Was." This was a number of years ago. Proceeds went to kids' sport. I wrote a chapter, as did Counselor Dodick. It was a fun book, and it was well-received, so much so that he has decided he wants to write another book with people presenting their stories. And so he's just asking anyone who's interested in bringing their stories forward to do so, and they could be involved with the hockey players or hockey moms and dads. And it's just a, it's a fun, fun part of Canadianna. And if you, if you want to participate and you're interested, he asks that you contact him at gordo@email.com. So I think, I think you'll probably connect a couple of people here on council as well. So just wanted to pass that on, and anybody in the public can do that as well. Thank you.
Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
Nothing this week.
Right, to my far right, Counselor Middleton Hope.
Nothing, thank you.
Next, we've got Deputy Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. As I said in my very bad accent, this is, of course, Lunar New Year, Chinese New Year. So to everyone celebrating, congratulations, and I hope you're having an amazing day.
Thank you. And my apologies, Counselor Carlson. As I'm looking to my left there, I see that you're virtually attending, so Counselor Carlson, my apologies.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I was also just going to take, I take every opportunity I can to wish people Happy New Year. And Deputy Mayor Croson put it very well. Happy Lunar New Year. It's the year of the tiger. Awesome.
Thank you. Counselor Palladino.
No, I have nothing to add. Thanks.
Counselor Parker.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to speak to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II's Platinum Jubilee. You'll notice that there's a picture of the Queen Elizabeth in council chambers, and there's always been. It's here, here behind me. On February 6, 2022, will mark Queen Elizabeth II's 70th year as the monarch of the United Kingdom and the Commonwealth, marking another first in her long reign as queen. Many firsts have occurred due to and during her reign. Hers was the first coronation to be televised. Her Majesty is the longest-reigning monarch in British and Commonwealth history. She is the first British monarch to celebrate a Platinum Jubilee. In 2011, she was the first British monarch to visit the Republic of Ireland in 100 years. In 1970, she changed how the monarchy interacted with crowds by going on her first walkabout in New Zealand, greeting and briefing chatting with people lined in the streets to see her. And for the first time ever, beacons will be lit in each capital city of the Commonwealth Nations on June 2, 2022. Many celebrations events will be marked throughout the year in the UK and Commonwealth Nations, one of which is the Queen's Green Canopy. Her Majesty is an advocate for sustaining the future of our earth through the planting of trees. Throughout her reign, she has planted approximately 1,500 trees around the world. The Queen's Canopy is an initiative that has already seen approximately 60,000 trees planted in the UK and has continued throughout the remainder of 2022. Queen Elizabeth II has reigned through some of the biggest changes in modern history. At 95 years old, and on her 70th birthday of being queen, she is symbol of perseverance, silent devotion, and of a monarchy that has been able to evolve with the times. Thank you. Next, I have a resolution from Acting Mayor Dodick. Adoption of agenda, that the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on February 1, 2022 be adopted as presented. Madam Clerk, are there any amendments to the agenda?
I have one late letter of support for item 4.9, Blackfoot Resource Hub, for council's consideration. It's from the OPO CASN Early Intervention Society, if council would like to add that to the agenda.
That would be a two-thirds vote. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Is there any question on that? To be adopted. Acting Mayor Dodick.
Yes, I call the question on the agenda as amended.
As amended. All in favor? Any opposed? That so carries.
I will send that letter out to council. Nope, on the screen.
Next, we have the consent agenda, 4.0, Deputy Mayor Croson. And it's up on, oh, it'll be up on the screen. There we are. Deputy Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. So we have 10 items on the consent agenda. We have a couple of minutes from past meetings. We have the status of directed resolutions. And then there are several items that have come forward from some of our standing policy committees. We have both economic and cultural and social. If there are any questions, I know that the chairs of those two SBCs are here, as well as any staff members who may be able to answer questions.
Counselor Middleton Hope.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like, I would like to pull item 4.9 from the consent agenda, as I have a motion arising related to that item.
Thank you, and it's my understanding that there does not have to be a vote on that. That could be pulled. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct. Any member of council can pull any item, and I would suggest that it would go under Section 8, Committee Submissions.
Committee Submissions, 4.9, will be pulled from the consent agenda. Counselor Parker.
Thank you. Mine's more in debate of the resolutions there. Thank you.
Debate of the consent?
I was just going to speak to one of the items in there, but I have no questions at all.
Okay. Acting Mayor Dodick.
Yeah, I just have one of those "am I correct" questions, and that's with respect to item, where'd it go? It had to do with the item 4.4. And the "am I correct" is that that consent agenda item basically defers a payment by, from the Lethbridge Hurricanes, from one year to the end of the term. So it's deferring the 2021 payment to 2031. So it's, it's a neutral event. So I just wanted to say, am I correct in that understanding?
Thank you for bringing that up. That is not a forgiveness of that. It is just merely putting it on to the end of the term, so you're correct.
Thank you.
And for debate, Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you in regards to item 4.10. I brought a resolution to our first council meeting in regards to getting a report on the goal-friendly transit. And in the submissions today, I see it's a good news story. And I just want to thank the Community and Social Development Committee, as well as Michael Fox and his team, and finding a solution to making sure that we have reliable transit service for both our senior citizens and organizations. So I just want to say thank you, and that gives me a closure on one of the resolutions that I brought forward at the start of this term. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. Any further debate? If not, turn the time over to Deputy Mayor Croson.
I'll call the question on the amended resolution.
On the amended resolution. All in favor? Any opposed? That so carries. Next, we do not have any presentations. We'll move right to official business. I do have a resolution, 6.1, Official Business: Examine Election Award System from Counsel Middleton Hope, whereas the City of Lethbridge placed a question on the October 18, 2021, general municipal election ballot that read, "Do you support using award system to elect city councillors other than the mayor, starting with the 2025 municipal election?" And whereas, 55.69% of the people that voted indicated yes, and 44.31% of the people that voted indicated no on the question. And whereas, the vote of electors on this matter was non-binding. Council would like further information on next steps to consider whether or not they want to proceed pursuing award system. Therefore, be resolved that council direct administration to provide a report for consideration that outlines the process to examine, develop options, decide, and implement an election award system for the City of Lethbridge, including information on legislative requirements, engagement, timelines, costs, and resources, reporting back to council through the Governance Standing Policy Committee by April 30, 2022. And we'll open it up for questions. Counselor Middleton Hope.
Nothing to add, your worship. I just call the question.
Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Thank you, Counselor Middleton Hope, for bringing this forward. I know that the Chair of Governance, SPC, Deputy Mayor Croson, was bringing this forward through governance, but I think it's a good idea to let the community know that we are moving forward on this. And so I appreciate that. My question outlines the process to examine, develop options in your "Therefore Be Resolved." Can you maybe explain what you're thinking there? Is, is the, is administration being tasked to explore all possible options for award system?
Yes, through his worship to, yeah, through his worship to Counselor Carlson. That's exactly what I'm thinking. I think it's an opportunity for administration to look at a number of different options. We heard about a variety of different methodologies to be used that are in play in other communities. And I think we need to develop, if we're going to go forward with this, we need to examine what they are and develop a process that's made in Lethbridge.
And thank you for that. So that will include a standard award system where there's eight councillors at large and eight different wards through to a hybrid system? Or a possibility of a variation on a theme? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, hybrid system or systems, yeah. Because there are several that are in play out there, and I think we want to look at all of them and make a determination, bring that back to council, make a determination which one's going to work for us, if any of them.
Thank you for that, Counsel. I appreciate that. If I can further, then, just because I promised myself that I would ask this question every time we send something to administration. So Mayor Higgin, through you, to the city clerk, I guess, or city manager or designate. April 30, it's not going to be too onerous, knowing that we're dealing with a lot of other issues at the moment. That's a doable timeline?
Thank you, Counselor Carlson. I just wanted to interject and say that this would just be a framework that we're bringing back by April 30. It wouldn't be all the options. So we're just going to look at, you know, what, what the timeframes would look like, what the engagement maybe would look like, what the process would look like. And we'll bring that framework back, and then council will vote on whether they want to pursue going further with it.
Sorry, I just, I got to figure that. Council will deal with that? Or is this referring it to governance?
Through governance. My apologies, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Higgin.
Thank you. Any further questions? And debate, to open debate, Counselor Middleton Hope? I think you called the question, correct?
I did.
Okay, the question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? That so carries. Thank you. And we'll move through to bylaws. And I have a resolution from Counselor Campbell, Bylaw 6338, An Establishing Bylaw of the Downtown Business Revitalization Zone, 7.1.1, For Second Reading. Be it resolved that Bylaw 6338, An Establishing Bylaw of the Downtown Business Revitalization Zone, Be Given Second Reading. Counselor Campbell.
Just for a little bit of context, in March of last year, the Civic Works and Governance Standing Policy Committees were presented with the recommendations of the heart of our city governance review, which was a very comprehensive evaluation. Western management consultants did it. And one area of recommendation was for greater clarity on roles and responsibilities and a corresponding implementation action to amend or replace the current bylaw, which has been in place since 1987. The proposed bylaw was developed by a working group composed of Downtown BRZ, Board of Directors and Staff, along with city administration, including city clerks, city celesters, Assessment and Taxation, and Opportunity Lethbridge. The Downtown BRZ endorsed the proposed bylaw at the board meeting on November 18 of last year. So that is the request before council today for the new bylaw. Unless there are any other questions?
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Sounds like the question's been called. No questions in the queue. All in favor? Any opposed? That so carries. And for a third reading, be it resolved that Bylaw 6338, An Establishing Bylaw of the Downtown Business Revitalization Zone, Be Given Third Reading, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Counselor Campbell?
Call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? That so carries. Next, I have a resolution from Counselor Carlson, Bylaw 6337, 2022 Downtown Business Improvement Area Tax Bylaw, 7.1.2. Second Reading. Be it resolved that Bylaw 6337, 2022 Downtown Business Improvement Area Tax Bylaw, Be Given Second Reading. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I'll open it up for any questions of my colleagues.
Any questions? I see none in the queue, Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. This is an annual bylaw that council must pass before the assessments can be done, a companion piece to the previous bylaw. The downtown business assessment rule must be completed to establish the mill rate for the tax rate bylaw that will be presented in April. Unless there's any further thoughts or questions, I would call for the vote.
I see none. The question has been called. All in favor? Any opposed? That so carries. And for a third reading, be it resolved that Bylaw 6337, 2022, Downtown Business Improvement Area Tax Bylaw, Be Given Third Reading, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Counselor Carlson?
I call for the vote.
Vote's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? That so carries. We do have the resolution that was pulled from the consent agenda, 4.9, from Counselor Campbell. CWSS Funding Allocation Approval for a Blackfoot Resource Hub. Be it resolved that City Council adopt the following recommendations of the Community Well-being and Safety Strategy, CWSS Advisory Committee. Approve $496,248 in annual funding leveraged from Outreach Support Services Initiative, OSSI, and Reaching Home, RH, to be allocated to the Blood Tribe, Kynai Nation, to deliver the Indigenous Resource Hub services. And authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute any further documents as may be required with regards to the $496,248 of funding for Blackfoot Resource Hub services, set to expire December 31, 2024. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you. This was before our committee earlier this month, and it is money that was already there that needed to be reallocated. And it's very critical funding for the Blackfoot Resource Hub. I think I'll defer to Mr. Fox if you want to add anything more about the importance of this, this money, where it's going, and how we're using it.
Through the chair, it is a critical infrastructure needed for some of our population in Lethbridge. It's, it'll be an outreach and help other services be able to see their services through the Blackfoot lens. So the Blackfoot, the, sorry, the Blood Tribe and the Kynai Nation were the successful, and who better to offer a service to the citizens of Lethbridge to make sure that we are offering the proper services to the residents of Lethbridge?
Thank you. I do have questions. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Through you, to administration, city manager, or designate. This is to ask to approve $496,248 in annual funding. And that is for a three-year agreement. It's not, I'm going to use round numbers, so I don't keep talking. It's not $500,000 over three years. It's $500,000 per year, correct?
Through the chair, yes, you are correct, and it's from federal granting agency.
Thank you. That's the Outreach Support Services and Reaching Home, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And do we have commitments that we will be receiving the OSSI and Reaching Home funding for each of those three years?
Correct.
And final question, if I may? The majority of this money must be allocated to Indigenous services and programs, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Parker.
Thank you very much, and thank you for those questions, Jeff. It gives me clarity. So, so my question is to Michael Fox. So no dollars from the local tax base would be used in this funding? Just want to make that very distinct. Am I correct?
Through the chair, you are correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. Acting Mayor Dodick.
I was just looking in the page two of 30 or 283 of 340, depending on how you look at the agenda. The money, the almost $500,000 a year, says that 327,960 per year must be used for Indigenous programs. So there's apparently 180,000 or something like that, 170,000 that could have been used for homeless programs that were non-Indigenous related. Do I understand that correctly?
I will defer to Marty Thompson, just to give more clarity on that. But I believe you are correct. Sorry.
Thompson, if you can come to the mic.
Yes, we receive funding from the provincial government and the federal government, all to address homelessness. And we do have the specific pot from the feds that must be allocated to Indigenous homelessness programs. Now, the provincial OSSI programs can be targeted to anybody in the community, and ultimately, you allocate those dollars to make the biggest impact. 80% of our homeless are Indigenous. So it would make sense to allocate the majority of our money to those efforts. Now, in this particular case, we have many programs that are funded well beyond this. A total of, from the province, 4.2 million per year. And of this, of the 4.2 million, this 100 and, I don't have the exact number in front of me, is a very small percentage, again, considering 80% of our homeless are Indigenous.
I just wanted to make sure that, I appreciate the need for this money being allocated. I just want to make sure that, at least that you're satisfied that the non-Indigenous homeless have not been forgotten in the mix. And you're telling me that they have not been forgotten in the mix.
Absolutely correct, yes.
My second question is, this is money that's, is a grant. The actual delivery, location of delivery service, that's not set in stone by this resolution? That's something to be decided in the future?
This is 100% the actual grant allocation only.
Only, okay. So it doesn't say that it comes from a specific location or anything else? It's just allocating the money that's been provided to the city, by the province, and the feds? And as you put out in the report, that a certain portion of it has to be directed to Indigenous homelessness?
You are correct.
We have a reply from Director of Community Services, Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Chair. I just also want to add that this resource hub would also be open to everyone. It's not just for Blackfoot.
Thank you. That's, that's good to know. Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you. Is there any further questions? And to open debate, Counselor Campbell?
I'll save it for close, if there, anybody else wants to debate.
Further debate? Seeing none, Counselor Campbell.
This is something that needs to get going now. Should have been moving forward a while ago, but due to circumstances, it's just we need to get this allocated, and very important for the city. And I asked my colleagues to support. Call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have a motion arising from Counselor Middleton Hope. Be it resolved that council direct administration provide a report to council by February 15, 2022, that includes the following. Number one, how did the city come to the idea of the resource hub to be located in the Bowman Building? And number two, referencing the City of Lethbridge Asset Rationalization and Optimization Plan currently underway and the Future Civic Commons Master Plan, provide, A, the prospective proposed timelines and plan of selling the Bowman Building and disposing of the asset, and B, what the city is currently utilizing the Bowman Building for and/or who is occupying the building in the interim until it would potentially be sold, and what is the criteria for occupying the building? Counselor Middleton Hope.
Thank you, your worship. What I'm requesting out of this motion is for administration to be tasked with the responsibility of going back and evaluating the location that has been identified for this purpose. There are other potential uses for this facility. It does take into consideration, or needs to take into consideration, a number of documents with respect to divesting the corporation of assets. And I think it's important for administration to go back and to provide us with the rationale for the identification of the particular location that's been identified, but to also look in terms of what other potential locations might be utilized for this purpose long term.
Thank you. Is there any questions? No questions? Deputy Mayor Croson?
I'm in for debate. No questions.
Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Thank you, Counselor Middleton Hope, for bringing forward some discussion, especially around the asset rationalization plan. Through you, Mayor Higgin, to city manager. Is it possible to do this in isolation? Or should we have a more fulsome discussion on the asset rationalization plan or progress in total?
Thanks, Counselor Carlson. What I, what I would recommend is that, because the asset rationalization program is in place as, and processes in place as proven, as proved by the, the previous council, I would recommend we provide a brief update as to where that work sits as part of the response to the motion arising if council decides it should go forward.
Okay, thank you for that. And is the timeline, as I said, I'm gonna have this every time, is the timeline requested here appropriate for that? Because I'd like a more fulsome discussion around the asset rationalization in total. Is, is this an appropriate timeline, or can we extend, or should we extend? Just asking about your time and capacity.
I think the timeline is appropriate, given the, the urgency to find a location for these services to come into play. And depending on the level of satisfaction with the report out on the status of the asset rationalization plan on the 15th, if council decides to go there, we can certainly at any time be asked by council to come provide an update on that program. And that might be a good idea, given the, the, that this council has not had the asset rationalization piece brought before them.
Great. Thank you for that. I think I may have another question, but I'm gonna hop out for now. I see other hands up.
Counselor Campbell?
Just for my clarification, and maybe this goes to Mr. Fox, when we're referring to the Bowman Arts Center, using, is, this is the Black, Blackfoot Resource Hub. Does this delay things if we pass this in terms of finding the location?
Through the chair. It'll take us several weeks to, to resolve a contract or an agreement as was just passed. So I believe the 14th will, will give us ample time.
Right, thank you.
Any further questions?
Just, just briefly, Mayor Higgin? I did, I did get a quick email from Counselor Middleton-Hope regarding this, but I, I don't have the actual resolution. Is it, do I just need to refresh my package, or is it on the screen that we can share?
It, it is on the screen. And was that recompiled, Madam City Clerk, with, with the motion arising in the agenda package? Okay. So it is on the screen. Is, this is what was, was pulled from, or was motion arising from the consent agenda item, correct? So do you see that on the screen, Counselor Carlson?
I see parts of it. I'm not sure I have the whole motion in front of me.
You can move just down to... And I'm having, the city clerk will be sending that to you right away as well, for those that are at home. There we are. There, it's on the screen. If you've got your glasses, zoom mode.
I do. I, I got, I bought six new pairs of glasses today, so I'm doing well. I'm doing well. Thank you. No, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I can see it now. I just wanted to ensure that it wasn't different than the one I had in front of me. Thank you.
Excellent. As, any further questions? If not, open debate. Counselor Middleton-Hope?
Thank you, worship. And if there's no further debate, then I call a question.
There is debate. Counsel, Deputy Mayor Crowson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I'm gonna first begin by admitting I was wrong. Over the last few years, I've been stating, based on the KPMG report, that Lethbridge spends only a quarter of what other comparable cities do on social programs and concerns. This isn't true. At the last Cultural and Social FBC meeting, it was actually noted that rather than spending 25% of what other cities do, we spend only 15% of what other cities do. And yet, this is a community that is still surprised that we have social issues and concerns. This is a city that is surprised when we know people are dying on our streets, that we have homelessness, and we have many concerns. We know one of the ways that we need to deal with this is through social programs. And yet, the city spends incredibly little in this area. Fortunately, other orders of government sometimes come to our aid, and we see here federal and provincial money to support us. So what could stop us from moving forward? The only thing that can is Lethbridge City Council. Because for this Indigenous Resource Hub to go forward, a space is needed. And we have one. We have the Bowman, which has been used by sports groups to run various games in the city over the years. It's been used by children programs over the years, and it's been used by many other groups. Yes, the last few years with COVID, we have seen the building empty for a little bit, but that has always been the purpose since the allied arts moved out, is to use this for community groups. And here we have a community group that has come forward that wants to partner with us. City council cannot balk. We have to get this moving, and we have to show a commitment that the other government levels have shown. I say, let's move ahead. Let's get the Bowman on the books as the location of the Indigenous Resource Hub. Let us work with community groups and move forward. I cannot support this resolution. Let's get the group in there. Perhaps at another time, we will find a better location that we can partner with them on, but let's get moving on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Dotick?
We just approved the funding for the hub, and it was clear in the questioning that we had not approved the, the location of it. Counselor Middleton-Hope is not arguing against the delivery of service. He voted like everyone else did with respect to the, the grant funding. He's asking questions that many members of council should be asking, and that is, what is the best use of that particular location? Nobody's denying that the service should be delivered, but what he's asking is the opportunity to get information answered within a relatively short period of time so that we can all make an informed decision. And if it turns out that that decision is as debated by Counselor Crowson, so be it. I don't have enough in information. I want that information, but I had no hesitation in putting my hand up with respect to the allocation of the grant funding. Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you. Just to follow up on some of the comments I heard from Acting Mayor Dotick. This is just an opportunity for us as a council and as a corporation to do our due diligence in a building. If we do do a deal, it's gonna be a long-term deal, so it's important that we get the right location. I think we all agree unanimously, as was stated earlier, that we have, we supported the funding and for the purpose of it being. But I'm just thinking on top of my head, I'm thinking, you know, for example, the transit facility has all that commercial lease space, and the city owns that building as well, and we haven't been able to rent that out. So there's probably lots of opportunities out there. I just don't want to tie up one building if there's another opportunity that we could use that building for as well. So I think a few weeks of due diligence can hurt, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. Counselor Carlson?
Sorry, Mayor Higgin. I'm having trouble clicking my buttons today. Thank you for the opportunity to, to debate and discuss. Had this been a resolution? First, I appreciate Deputy Mayor Crowson's passion on this issue of, of moving forward, and that's why I asked the questions about the timeline and how, how possibly it would affect. And I appreciate Acting Mayor Dotick's question about would this impede the process at all? And I'm glad to hear it would not. And so I, I don't mind actually taking a look at this. We may discuss this, look at this building through the lens of, of asset rationalization or, or removing assets from under the city control, and it might go to a, a not-for-profit for a, a certain dollar, or whatever you want to call it. So I'm, I'm, this is not gonna preclude me from my support of this as a location or an opportunity, but I sure don't mind looking at it. Maybe there are better opportunities or better options for this building. And so because of the speed that this would be coming forward, I, I don't see it as an impediment to moving forward with the hub. And I hope our administration will correct me if I'm wrong in that assumption, because if it is an impediment, then I may change my mind. But at the moment, I don't see it as an impediment. I think it is us looking at it through many different lenses, and what are the opportunities? So I, I will support this at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Carlson. Counselor Campbell?
Sure. Thank you for the, for the passion. I love the passion. This is an important project, and I'm very comforted by Mr. Fox saying that this will not take any time away from the importance of getting this established. That gives me pause to say, okay, let's find all the information we need to find out about this. So I, I will in fact support the resolution.
Thank you. Counselor Schmidt-Rempel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree. I would like to take a look at this building as part of a full asset rationalization plan. Taking a full look at it, as well as how it's going to play a part in the city commons plan going forward, I think is part of us doing our due diligence. And I do appreciate Mr. Fox explaining to us that, that we will still be moving forward with our Indigenous hub plans, and that we have still approved the money for those services. So I will support this resolution as well.
Thank you. Seeing no further debate, I too will support this. It's, it's two weeks, and I know we've, we've heard that it's been, this has been for quite a while this is going on, the additional two weeks to get the, the information, as my colleagues have mentioned previously. It's, it's that two weeks, and, and so for that reason, I will be supporting this. Counselor Middleton-Hope to close?
Thank you. I think we've had a robust discussion, and I, now unless there is any further discussion, call a question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? You're frozen for a second there, Deputy Mayor, so you, you are opposed, correct?
Very much so, yes.
Okay. So eight in favor, one opposed. Thank you. Next, we move to section 12, City Council Updates. Are there any city council updates? No city council updates? Moving to resolution from Acting Mayor Dotick, Closed Meeting Human Resources Matter 14.1. Be it resolved that council direct that the closed meeting discussions with respect to human resource matter remain confidential pursuant to section 17, Disclosure to Personal Privacy, 19, Confidential Evaluations, 24, Advice from Officials, and 29, Information that Will Be Available to the Public of the Freedom of Information Protection of Privacy Act. Further be resolved that council direct the mayor and general manager of People and Culture to proceed with the confidential direction provided in the closed meeting. And further be resolved that council establish the following closed special meetings of council on the following dates: Thursday, February 3rd, 2022, at 4:00 p.m., and Monday, February 7th, 2022, at 2:00 p.m. And that this matter be referred to those meetings. Acting Mayor Dotick?
Yes, unless there's any questions, I would call the question.
No questions? All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. Thank you. Next, from Counselor Schmidt-Rempel, Closed Meeting Operating Budget Update 14.2. Further be resolved that council direct the closed meeting discussions, reports, documents, and attachments with respect to operating budget update remain, update remain confidential pursuant to sections 23, Local Public Body Confidences, and 24, Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Schmidt-Rempel?
If there are no questions, I'll call the question.
Questions? All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. And with that, we are concluded.